Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we need to start off with electing chairman and chair pro temp for 2024. I make motion.
I.
Carl Helgob will be the chairman.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Carl, I will turn it over to you.
And we need to elect a pro chair also would be Dean.
Yes.
I think I made motion to have Dean Cluse as a chair of pro temp.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number three, I will motion to approve the tentative agenda.
I will make move to approve the tentative agenda.
Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll read the minutes from last meeting.
December twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, Chairman Cluse called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM. Members present for Rasmussen includes with Helgob present via Zoom. Motion by Rasmussen, second by Cluse to approve tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of December eighteen, twenty twenty-three were read and approved, approved claims for payment. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgob to table taking action on going to bid on the Public Health Building for two weeks, motion carries. Wright County Board of Supervisors acting as drainage trustees met to discuss joint drainage district one hundred dash two, which is a joint district with Franklin County. Franklin County has already reviewed and took action on the change order number one for an increase in nine thousand three hundred forty-four dollars and pay estimate number three for one hundred twenty-four thousand one fifty-five. There was then a motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgob to approve the change order number one and pay estimate number three, motion carries unanimously. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to participate in the wellness program and sign the wellness program agreement between Iowa State of Social Vision Counties and Wright County, motion carries unanimously. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to approve the amended fitness center membership policy, motion carries unanimously. Adam Clemens, Wright County Engineer presented updates on secondary roads, the crews are continuing to cut brush and have ten of the sixteen townships completed. Motion by Cluse, seconded by Rasmussen to adjourn the meeting.
Any additions or questions? The plan they will send approved this red. Okay, claims have been around. Open forum for the public, anybody in the boardroom along Zoom wish to address the board today?
Carl, I just wanted to give an update on the the issue with Summit Carbon Solutions, the initial briefs have been filed, they can be viewed in the electronic filing system. As you know, we're a part of the counties. And so the arguments that are made in that brief, it's eighty-five pages long, but it concerns eminent domain requirements, not only of the state, but at the federal level. The determinations of whether or not it's public convenience. Statutory requirements for the permit. The proposed route. Local permitting requirements and arguments against the fact that that it's been that from our view, they need to comply with local requirements. And then conditions that should be issued on the permit if the permit is granted. Again, that can be viewed in the electronic filing system for the Iowa Utility Board.
Any questions? Right about here. Bob, we got a question for you.
Okay.
Have you seen the, did you by any chance see the Harden County file?
I have not had an opportunity to read that. I did see that it was filed, but I have not read it.
Okay, I'm gonna leave a copy with Carl here. And
Okay.
And it's mainly on the pumping stations because they're claiming that the pumping stations aren't gonna be included in the permitting. I think that's the way it is. There's some legal stuff in there that probably takes a lawyer.
Okay. All right. I will review that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anything else, Dean?
No. Uh, yes, one, one thing, Carl. There will be reply briefs due on the nineteenth of January. And then sometime after that, after the I U B has had an opportunity to review all of the briefs that have been submitted, the initial briefs and then the reply briefs, then they will make a determination.
Is there any date on that or a timeline and that needs to be done by?
There is not a timeline after that.
Thank you.
You bet.
We will skip number eight to nine fifteen of the fair board. Item nine, reimbursement rate for mileage to two thousand twenty-four currently hits point six five five cents per mile. We have a new rate for the federal rate. I thought we made that last time.
The point four would be point six seven.
Point six seven? Dean, the new rate is point six seven and the federal rate were point six.
Okay. I would make a motion that we follow the federal rate for mileage.
You have a motion to raise it to point six seven, the federal rate, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item ten, drainage warrant rates currently were at six percent, Peggy.
Eight treasurer of Iowa is still six percent.
Six percent, would you want to keep it at six then?
Well, I would take more, but yeah.
I'll make the motion to be stayed at six percent.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor to raise or to keep the interest rate of the drainage warrant at six percent, say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Okay, doesn't a Office of Wright County Employees for Holidays in two thousand twenty-four, that was in our packet?
Yep, we've got it here. Wednesday is Christmas. And we will need Tuesday, the twenty-fourth off before Christmas. And Tuesday, the thirty-first off for New Year's Day.
So we will be open on the Monday?
Yes, we will be open on the Monday. It's pretty hard to shut down for three days. But we'll have our first meeting on Thursday.
And not the Monday?
Not that Monday.
Yeah.
Both Christmas and New Year's?
No, Christmas, we can do the meeting on the Monday. Just the New Year's one because the New Year's.
And Dean, that's a change from what was in the package. Any input on that?
Uh, I remember reading the email, I think it was sent out by Peggy concerning the holidays and following the the state. And that was because our local offices didn't have support from the state on those days that we normally wouldn't take. If Peggy's down there, can she expand on that at all?
Well, I think it was a
Just a conversation.
I think it was me. Okay. But it was from your guys' conversation.
And we really can't because they don't set their holidays.
Until after.
Until after the fact.
But I said I would look into
Okay.
Further discussion.
And we can't only do Monday, Tuesday, because Wednesday is a legal holiday. So
Okay.
Monday.
But I'd say unless anybody has a question, we leave everything else the same, President's Day. Would be February nineteenth, Memorial Day, be Monday, May twenty-seventh, Fourth of July, Thursday, the fourth. Labor Day, Monday, September second, Veterans Day, Monday, November eleventh. Thanksgiving, which be Thursday, November twenty-eighth. And then your Christmas and New Year's will be already talked about. And yes, and also a floating holiday.
That should be for the employees.
Employees, yes. Sorry, Bob, thanks for reminding me of that.
Do I have a motion to accept those as the holidays for two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Good.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, otherwise, pay cash fund for various offices.
Want me to read that?
Yeah, you don't, funny, good.
Uh, many cash for offices, county auditor, twenty dollars, county engineer, fifty dollars, public health nurses, fifty-five dollars, county sheriff, two hundred dollars, and county treasurer, fifty dollars.
I make a motion to keep all those the same.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, item thirteen, I'm in the domain.
They are.
Oh, I'm planning.
No, we'll go back there, we'll keep going on that. Oh. It's sorry. Okay.
It's for fair board.
It's fair board.
Yeah, I'm in it. Sure. Okay. They're on.
How you doing? Watch your knees. I don't like that.
Really?
Yeah.
What the?
Don't say that.
You swear to our camera.
Yeah.
I'll talk to him later.
Let us know how your fair went this year.
Well, it's another great fair, and we're excited to share some of those, some of the data with you about that, and some things to look forward to for next year, but again, on the cover, you'll just see tons of pictures of kids and things happening at the fairgrounds. Some of the things will be referenced in the report, some of them, if you have questions about them, you can ask me about that later, but this is our two thousand twenty-three year in review. Our theme for last year was barn lights and country nets, so we're excited about that. And excited about the new upcoming theme too, that we'll share here in a little bit, but it was a great time, because we filled the barns and turned on the lights and each night we enjoyed time with friends and family, and it's a great time for everybody to congregate and have a great time together. We continue to work with Emerge Marketing this past summer, we feel that that is the way to go with our marketing, things happening. People are all on social media, so we're just trying to spread our way with social media. We've received awards with, working with them. We received an award from the Iowa Tourism Board for Outstanding Social Media Execution. So it was great to be in the room to accept that award from the Iowa Tourism Board with a bunch of other much larger entities such as the Iowa State Fair and lots of chambers from around the state of Iowa, so it was fun to receive that award with them. The board has also decided to continue our work and expand that with them for next year. So be sure you check us out on Facebook, Instagram, we had some ads on Spotify this last year. And also even some low tech things, I've even putting some banners around on hay bales throughout the county, so some different things we're trying to try to get the word out so that everybody's aware. And make sure they're coming to the fair. So the youth involvement, you'll see in your report, we had a hundred thirty-eight four H and FFA livestock exhibitors and ninety-five non-livestock exhibitors, so those are our static exhibitors that are in the four H building. So that was just over eight hundred and twenty entries into the areas of livestock and non-livestock exhibits. We had eleven participants in the palette challenge, and the top two exhibitors got to sell their items at the wood carving auction. The top item sold for one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which that exhibitor was able to receive half of that back. That's kind of the award for being able, being selected as the top exhibitor. But then he turned around and donated a hundred, a hundred dollars of that back to the fair, because he wanted to put it towards some more free entertainment for next year. So it was awesome that we had an exhibitor that not only won a great award for that, but then also turned around and donated some of it back to the fair. We had thirty-three participants in the Little Miss and Mister Contest, that was in its seventh year of existence. And then the popular events of like the bucket cap, we had thirty-eight bucket cap participants, twenty little squealers, and five not a slam participants. So we're just trying to get everybody involved in the fair, and the more that are involved, the more that come to the fair, of course. We had another great turnout for the kitty pedal tractor pull, but unfortunately, the information that came back to the office didn't include the total number of exhibitors, so I don't have a final number for you on on that for the kitty pedal tractor pull. We still do continue to present scholarships around the county for seniors who've been active in the fair. We like to award three scholarships every year, but last year we only had completed applications from two participants. So they were awarded to Dakota Alt of Eagle Grove and Reed Huntley of Goldfield, and those are now five hundred dollar scholarships from the Wright County Fair Board, so we'll look for those twenty twenty-four graduates to start applying real soon. The sponsorship program, we're very proud of that, was in its twentieth year this last year. And this last year was another record year, so we raised over a hundred and nine thousand dollars, a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars. So that really brings our grand total over the twenty years to just over one million dollars that that sponsorship program has raised. And when we started that, we were not sure where that would grow to or what that would become, but it's each and every one of these fair board members that's with me today, as well as a former fair board member that go out and knock on doors and talk to sponsors to make that work each year, but this last year it was a hundred and nine thousand. Besides the sponsorship program, they did also start the extended premium program in that this past year was the fourth year of doing that, and they raised just over twenty thousand dollars. All twenty thousand of that gets paid back to all of the livestock exhibitors. So it's on a pro rated basis, and then the fair board then does put on top of that some of the extended premiums for the grand champion and the reserve champion winners. We started a fair foundation many years ago, and I really should look up how many years ago that was started, but we're excited to announce that we have currently, just currently over twenty-eight thousand dollars in that fund, and that fund just stays there, we don't capitalize on that fund at all, other than putting donations into that fund as we're trying to build that for the future of the fair. We also continue to promote ways of supporting the fair beyond just our sponsorship and extended premium programs. And we wanted to share those with you as well, so if you know of someone who might fall into any of those categories, we would appreciate you telling them about those as well. We consider, you know, donating a few bushels of grain from this fall in the name of the Wright County Fair. And if you're a Thrive It member, there's some Thrive It Choice dollars that people are able to direct, we are listed as one of the nonprofits in that Thrive It Choice dollars. So if you have that capability, you could do that to the Wright County Fair. Consider a year-end donation to the Wright County Fair, or one of the newer things that we just started last year is called our Wall of Honor. We were getting memorial donations, and we have a whole building full of benches now, you can never have enough benches around the fairgrounds, but when the building became full of benches to store them in the wintertime, we wanted to come up with something different to be able to recognize the people that were donating memorial money, so we now have a wall of honor. That board has been created and hung prominently, and once we get to the next project of the grandstand, that board will be moved to the grandstand area, but donation in someone's name to the Wright County Fair is a unique way to honor that extraordinary person as well. Probably someone who has touched the lives of others that are attending the fair, so we currently have ten names on the wall, and we have a few more names to add for two thousand twenty-three, so those ten names came from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, and then we'll add a few more names for twenty twenty-three, so if you have memorial money that you would like to donate towards the Wright County Fair, we will add your name to the wall of honor for that. We continue to partner with the Wright County Corn Growers to enhance our herdsmanship program, we feel that's a very important program as we have youth exhibiting their animals in the barns. So the Wright County Corn Growers provide the T-shirts and the overall, for the overall waiting club as well, prizes for the clubs in each different barn. Our veterans program was in its ninth year this past year, and we honored right around fifty veterans this past year. Continue to work with Scott Amusements, which is fabulous, because as we go to state convention, there are less and less carnivals, and we all know that there are hundred and some county fairs within about a six week period in the state of Iowa, so to still have a carnival, we feel pleased with that, and every time we go and talk to them, it's whatever you would like to do, whatever you would like to do, so however we can try to manipulate that and work with them, we're pleased to still have a carnival at the Wright County Fair. And we're also looking at tweaking the schedule a little bit with them and tweaking some of the promotions for the fairgoers. We just had those conversations with them at convention. This past summer, we had a blast in the grandstand, we had four nights of entertainment in the grandstand this past summer. So we kicked it off with the popular Wright rodeo, then on Friday, we had NTPA truck and tractor pullers. Saturday, we welcomed Farm Rock to open for Blackhawk, and that was a great concert. And on Sunday, we brought in the Kraft Brothers along with Corey Waller and the Wicked Things, and then, of course, that was followed by Four Gs. Pyrotechnics with the fireworks in the grandstand. Also in the grandstand this past year, we did have our beer garden, it was in its third year of existence, and the last year and this past summer was when we had the beer garden offered every night in the grandstand, it's only in the grandstand itself. This past summer, we were able to gain a profit of thirteen thousand eight hundred and two dollars, so we have set that aside for our grandstand improvements. And earmarked that into a separate account for our grandstand project. So that money has been set aside for those grandstand renovations. We also offer lots of free entertainment around the grounds, we hosted acts like the Bill Riley Talent Show, Playing With Giants, Canines in the Clouds, the veterans program, of course, the Doc Magic Show, the Medical Free Church, kids pedal tractor pulls, Little Miss and Mister, the barrel horse race competition, the conservation station from Iowa State University, the kids barrel train, we had Bingo for one day, barn herd Olympics, and of course, our woodcarver Lynn Anderson, so lots of different things offered across the grounds for people to see and do and participate in. This past summer, we continued to work with Lynn Anderson, as well as Art U Creative and Preppy Farmer and Sally Sewing Room. They all helped us, the Art U Creative, Preppy Farmer, and the Sally Sewing Room helped us with the foot block class. And the auction for those items brought in just over five thousand dollars, so again, another avenue to be able to set some money aside for that grandstand project. So some of the improvements that we did around the grounds for two thousand twenty-three, continued electrical work, and that is an ongoing process. In fact, we were just having some conversations, a couple of the board members met with the city of Eagle Grove and doing some partnerships with the rec center. They need to do some electrical work there, and it kind of ties in with some of our electrical work, so we're gonna be partnering with them to to do some continued upgrades around the grounds. A new grandstand entrance was put in, we put, extended the roadway on the east side of the fairgrounds to allow easier access for those large semis that are coming in for the NTPA truck and tractor pull, which required a new gate, new roadway, all of those things, but we're very pleased with the the project that happened there. Continued work on the roadways around the fairgrounds, it feels like we get load after load after load of rock every year. Even when the fair is not in existence, it feels like it's grand central station through the fairgrounds. As people try to cut to get to a different area or something, but that just takes wear and tear on the roads, and so it's part of a lot of rock every year. We did some tin on the north ends of a couple of the buildings to help preserve some of those older buildings. Purchased a bunch of new poultry cages for the poultry barn, and then one of our board members created the gravity weight and basketball, it was constructed by him and purchased, the items were purchased by the fair board, and then he put that all together for us, and it was an area, one more thing for the kids to do to keep them busy and occupied during some of the times on the fairgrounds. So future projects that we're looking at, it is, of course, continued electrical work, like I said, that's, there's always electrical problems on the fairgrounds. A whole new look to the grandstand, we have some specs and things drawn up for that, now it's just setting aside enough money to be able to do that project. Our small animal departments are growing, so now we need some new rabbit cages, and we need to revamp that rabbit barn so that we can get enough cages in for all the different rabbits that are coming to the fair. Along with many other thoughts and ideas still in process that we're not willing to share yet, but we just got some new ideas coming, so. And we're excited to announce that next year, we're adding a date to the fair, so as we added some things to the fair last year, schedules overlapped, and it was difficult for some of the exhibitors to get to all of their things. So we are actually now officially starting the fair on Tuesday. So we'll start Tuesday, the four H judging will still happen on that day, but we'll also have some other things happening, we'll kick it off with the parade Tuesday night and crowning of a clean Tuesday night, and then that allows us a whole nother day to schedule things in as we go, so the dates for next year's fair are July ninth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and our theme is How Sweet It Is. So along with so many traditions, we also have some new things, we're gonna continue with four nights of entertainment in the grandstand. Lots of new free stage entertainment, we're working with a promoter now, where we're trying to cycle things in so that we don't keep the same thing for more than one year or two years in a row, so next year, we'll have some entertainment piece called Ninja Experience. Louis Comedy Circus, Kid's Science Safari, and Professor Newton are some of the contracts that we have already signed for next year. We're gonna work around and move around the fireworks, those will be on a new night, instead of culminating the end of the fair more towards the beginning of the fair to kick off the grandstand events. Our concert announcement, we're still waiting on a final approval on the concert announcement, so that concert announcement will be coming real soon, we're excited about some of the offers that are out, we're waiting for the bands to get back to Nashville after the, we take a two week hiatus over the Christmas, New Year's break, so we're waiting for them to get back to approve the offer that's out there. We have NTPA truck and tractor pull back, but we're also contracting for a different event. So local pullers can participate in a truck and tractor pull as well, so it will be on a completely different day, but it will allow the local pullers to be able to participate in something like that. We couldn't tap that in with the NTPA truck and tractor pull because of all of their insurance and and legal ramifications with having the NTPA name on that, so that will be on a completely separate night, but we're excited about being able to offer that on the grounds. And then a continued expansion of our dog show, being able to get that in the schedule so that the kids participating in that can have a better opportunity to be able to participate, our four H and FFA exhibitors. We're excited to share that we continue to be involved statewide with the Association of Iowa Fairs. Myself and our, our contact from Emerge Marketing, Shelley, we gave two presentations at convention about marketing your fair, and those presentations were both very well received. We had standing room only in the large room that we were in for both of the presentations, and we were the only presentation that was given twice at convention, so we continue to promote ourselves as well as ways that we are doing things across the state of Iowa. I was also surprised when we were at convention, when we were at the awards banquet, I was selected as the two thousand twenty-three fair person of the year. So that was a huge honor, a humbling honor, but it was very nice to be able to be recognized with this Association of Iowa Fairs. So I have a few of the fair board members with me today, Rodney is currently our president, and he does a darn fine job in that role, keeping us moving forward, so we appreciate him, our vice president is Brad Grand George, Secretary Allison Whaley, our treasurer is Rachel Spangler, also with me today, Lily Swanson. Also with me today, Lily Swanson and Matt Schreiber are with me today. But then other board members of Andy Charleston, Jeff Meyer, Ree Wagner, Matt Loops, Dan Gomat, Ben Buckner. And our newest member is Cory Tweetin. We now have a thirteen member fairboard. We had a member who wanted to join the fairboard. And as the fair continues to grow and manpower is needed, we contacted our attorney about can we change our bylaws? Because we have someone who wants to help. And so, and the help is always needed. So our bylaws now state that we can have up to a fifteen member fairboard. So we added one in this past year. Next year, if we're able to find another person, we would add another member in and be a fourteen member board. And then the year after that, possibly add in another member to be up to a maximum of a fifteen member fairboard. So right now, we have thirteen fairboard members. And as our fair continues to grow, we felt the manpower was needed in that area as well. So you can contact any of those members or myself if you have questions about anything. So this is our time now when we are able to talk to you about county funding. We appreciate the integral part that you have in helping us make the Wright County Fair the best that it can be. And we appreciate that you gave us an increase last year in our funds and we hope that you will stay at that amount, if not increase once again. As with everything, our costs continue to go. We were just discussing before we came in here. I just received notice from our insurance agent that there's, we can expect at least a thirty percent increase in our insurance once again. So the cost of ribbons, the cost of banners, the cost of insurance, the cost of judges, the cost of entertainment, all continues to rise. So i- if it's ever in your ability to increase that once again, we would certainly appreciate that. And, and I've heard lots of positive feedback from you last year about including the, the funding from other county fairs from across the area. So I increased that or I updated that chart again. This was from the information that we've received from the Association of Iowa Fairs. The county funding of other local fairs and where the Wright County Fair falls within that listing is there in that listing on that third page for you. Also, we appreciate your partnership in, in partnering with us on matching a capital campaign or a capital project around the fairgrounds. Because we can't do it without you. So I also did include bills from this past year from some of our capital projects so that you have the dollar amounts that we have put forth towards some of those projects around the grounds. The first one being the putting in the new roadway into new entrance to the grandstand for the trucks and the semis. And then the second bill is the, the amount for the new fence so that we can open it up and allow those semis to come in there. And then just a couple of bills for the rock, some of the rock that went around the grounds. And then some of the electrical bills that we've incurred in the past, in the past year. So you'll see that those far exceed that, that matching amount that, that we have instilled upon us in the past. So that's kind of our two thousand and twenty-three fair in review. Do you have any questions for us or do you guys have anything you want to add to that?
It's very big day to work.
We appreciate you guys. I mean, it's, it's a monumental task when you guys make it look like it's so easy, but they have working board members.
Yeah, they're very hardworking board members. And you know, when the call goes out for a project that needs to happen. Last year, I think a call went out to Lily is, can you come mow the lawn? And I was like, I don't even mow my own lawn. But she came and she, you know, because the lawn has to be mowed at a certain time, so it lasts for the next week. As you're getting ready to, to bring in campers and all of those kinds of things. So, you know, lots of calls go out to people when things need to happen and there's lots of people that come and help and it really is fun. And this board works hard together, but they also play hard together. And we really appreciate all the work that they do do because you won't find that on a lot of other boards. Yeah, yeah, definitely. So. So if you have any questions at any time, don't hesitate to reach out to us. If I can't answer your question, I'll make sure I can find that out for you.
Thank you. And we're, we're doing budgeting right now, so we'll get back to you on that. But thank you so much for you. It does, really does something that brings the whole county together.
Absolutely. It's fun. It's fun. Yeah, thank you.
Congratulations on the award and to all the fairboard members. Thanks for all your hard work. Truly appreciated.
Appreciate you. Oh, and Brad Grand George. I'm sorry. I didn't know you all. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you.
Now we're going to talk to Clay a little bit.
I know.
Busking stuff.
Item thirteen, applying eminent domain to the mission. That's the sort we've been working with. I know we have a list of some of the names. We have some vacancies on that. Where Dean?
I'm, I'm making some phone calls. Jason did confirm for me the Iowa Coast section. It is a, you, you do get compensation for it, two hundred dollars a day plus expenses. So I'm making some phone calls, working on the list. That is a pro, that is a work in progress.
I've got a couple of names that we talked about earlier this morning that I will reach out to also.
Very good.
You got a company you've been working on also?
Yes, I've got thirty minutes added.
This time we do need to work on, I think this will be the first time.
So what was that, two hundred dollars a day and mileage?
And expenses, that's correct.
Thank you, Dean.
This wasn't more important because I think they actually may end up meeting this time in the first time in over sixty years. Yeah, so.
How many people are on that?
Twenty, twenty-seven according to Iowa Code.
Yeah, and then, and then the judge picks a certain amount.
Like a very.
Like a very. We give a fool when the judge picks a fool. Interview everybody. It's divided into owners and operators of agricultural property, owners of city or town, licensed real estate salesmen, or real estate brokers, bank through auctioneers, property managers, praisers, personally responsible for making loans. So I mean, kind of the cross section of, of professions. So the judge picks two from each group. Yes. So anyway, so that's.
Do you want, what day you want to put that on?
You know, then we mean that, we see what we're having. Instead, we have, I mean, falling off or adding on. So I'm just keep that down for the bill.
So January. What do they use for value soar?
I think it sounds like a jury trial. The judge is going to give them the
Directions.
The directions.
What was the question?
How, you know, what do they, do they, do they take direction or how do they take direction? Is there a process? And there'll be an order. I know, Case, don't tell them. How does it work for those to you?
Yeah, we have to set the mean, facilitate all the places from the meat. We have to facilitate rights to and from the properties we're going to look at. And then it goes from there to the eminent domain making their decision and goes before the judge.
So yeah, and, and it, those, those people are responsible for ensuring just compensation for the land that's going to be taken. If indeed eminent domain is authorized.
And each parcel is a value.
That's right. They look at each parcel individually.
Yeah, it's not a blanket across the county of each parcel.
No, no.
No? Or is it across, isn't each parcel looked at separately, Deans? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Each parcel is looked at separately. That is correct.
So it goes from twenty-seven down to two in each of the, two, four, six, eight. And the judge picks the eight and then the sheriff does his part. And then the judge gives the direction to the, the board and then we wait for the, the response. That will be on value only. It won't be if they can or can't. It'll be based on value.
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. What are their guidelines or specific things that they?
What makes just, what, what makes for just?
Compensation.
How do they arrive at, say, a dollar a figure?
I think that they probably look at the, the market value of the property. They would also take input. The landowner is, is given an opportunity to talk to the commission that the judge selects if they feel that there's something that is not being considered.
Okay, I mean, because it does amount more to more than just the value of the land. I mean, there's damages and delays and interference with actually doing the farm processes.
I would, I would, I would assume that they look at all of those factors.
I don't.
Exactly.
I know. I don't, I don't want to say I know that exactly because I don't, I don't know the exact what that judge orders on that. This, this board has not been since Interstate thirty-five was coming through. So I mean, it has not been, it's a little bit of a roll of history.
I'm just, I'm asking because we are directly affected and it's.
And we can, we can reach out to our attorney and define, maybe find some of those questions out where I just don't have those answers right now for you.
That would be good.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item fourteen, accept cash out for Wright County Treasurer over the business. We ended that account earlier today. All ballots. Hey, total today, just look at the next. Cash was thirty-six hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-two cents. That check is thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight. Driver's license of fifty is total of forty-one thousand, three eighty-one, sixty-one at the end of business.
Make a motion to approve.
For a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Okay, item fifteen, making the following appointments for two thousand and twenty-four. Courthouse, county farm, range township assignments. I think in the past, we've had just the whole board do those.
Yes.
I think a motion, we continue that.
I would second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, appoint supervisors to various boards.
I make a motion, we all stay on the boards that we're on.
Second that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Yeah, the range attorney. Currently, we have David Johnson.
I'd make a motion, we save it, David Johnson.
Second that. By Deans? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All ayes, motion carries. Okay, make appointments to fill on expired terms and township trustees.
I made a motion to appoint Marty Brandt, was that Troy Township? The late township. He accepted the deal.
Okay.
That's for trustee.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept.
Point.
A point, Marty.
Marty Brandt.
For the trustee for Lake County, for Lake Township. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then any other vacancies that you need to work on? There's one more.
Troy Township.
What do we, what do we need in Troy?
Troy Township trustee. Yeah.
Just a trustee.
Okay, I think we had, we filled the, the treasurer or the clerk last year. Okay.
And then Pleasant Township trustee Ron Jergens has moved to Mason City. They, they have not notified us yet that they would like to replace him, but that's coming down the tide.
That was pleasant, you say.
Correct.
Will they give us a nominee, you think?
I think if you talk to them, they might be able to find.
Okay. So we have one in Pleasant, one in Troy coming up right now.
Yeah.
Okay. We want to just go ahead and put that for update next week also, when we get these things wrapped up. Okay, official newspapers. Right now, we have Wright County Monitor, Eagle Grove Eagle, and the Belmont Independent.
They have all, we sent letters requesting to continue.
Okay, and then we do, we only require to have two. We do three. Are they doing the billing stays the same on two thirds or?
Yeah, they are still billing at two thirds. The Monitor and Eagle Grove Eagle is using a new billing system upload through column. We're still trying to figure that out and try to figure out how to get it so that it's cost effective. And a, a part of me wants to tell them that, no, we're not going to, we're going to go back to the old way because the, the billing was a little bit. I, I don't know. The, the billing's okay now because they bill it by way. It's just the, the process and, and we're, we're not.
Inputs.
Yeah, we're, we're not newspaper editors. We're not, even when you upload something, you, you can't see what it's going to actually look like in the newspaper. We don't know, you know, the font and the, I mean, what is it, Ponca, Pikes, Pikes? And it just, it's, it's a job. It's time consuming.
That's a new process for the two papers.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the official newspapers, Wright County Monitor, Eagle Grove Eagle, Belmont Independent.
There are seconds.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Okay, medical, medical examiners and investigators every two years appoint to do that.
Yeah, I think that's all taken care of.
So there's, this is just a confirmation of the list that we have currently because on your, in your packet.
Is it actually, actually I know, or is it really just when they come due?
So the, we just recently added with John Nissen and Katie Schlichting as medical exam, medical investigators. So I would just, instead of appointing every two years, we'll just kind of keep it on the annual organizational meeting and just do it. And that way, it's a good update and a refresher. I have to say Wright County is pretty lucky to have the number of people that we have because there's counties that don't have anybody.
You're motion on this one.
What is the information? We're going to keep on the agenda rolling every January.
I'd say just do a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the medical examiners and investigators for two thousand and twenty-four.
Medical examiners, it's John Aronson, and he's kind of our lead person that we use. Deputy Medical Examiners are Andrea McLaughlin and Dustin Smith. And then our investigators are Mike Glitters, Vinnie Frank, Tiffany Folger, Monica Forbes, Andrew Nelson, Melanie Klein, Savannah Schnitzer, Matthew Ringenberg, John Nissen, and Katie Schlichting. And also Amy Erickson Keller is a medical examiner out of Webster City, but is agreed to cover Wright County.
And these, they go out to every, is it every death that is?
Every death that's, we have in county or any cities.
That is not like in a nursing home or things like that? Is it, I'll explain. They're just, not like car wrecks, you have to die at the home.
Even everything on the D D M, medical center, say that they're gone, but a lot of that's formality when it's a nursing home.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, board of adjustments next year. Okay, Board of Judgments, next year, uh, yeah, Elizabeth Seaberson's term expired and she has agreed to stay on for another term. Elizabeth Seaberson? Yeah, okay. I'd make a motion to accept her appointment for another uh term.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, we stand close.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Yeah, appoint members of the Wright County Economic Development Commission. We have any for that this year?
Yes, Commissioner Todd Boss has agreed to continue the service.
Okay. The motion to accept Todd for another term.
Go move.
Okay, second, right?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, appoint members of the Board of Health three-year terms. I believe we've got some changes here. Sandy, you want to bring us up to speed on that?
So Mickey's retiring from the board after many, many years. Andrew Wagner, um. Narcissist from Eagle Grove will be replacing her. And then Dr. McLaughlin's term will need to be reviewed. So it's five members for. Your terms by law, by Iowa Code.
And Dr. McLaughlin will, who's who will re?
Well, he.
Oh, it's, oh, it's next one.
Yeah, and he'll be required. So we need to appoint uh. Andrew Wagner.
The, at the meeting, the board has already tentatively approved during Mickey's ending year. The board will then officially, the Board of Health will officially then approve that in its board meeting also.
By a motion from board.
So move.
There are seconds.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
We do the Wright County Sheriff of Foundation.
So that is uh a separate.
It's on.
How does that, the Sheriff of Foundation is, that's not really an appointment by?
That's correct. This is a uh foundation on their own. They appoint their own board members. All right. Thank you.
Hey, resolution, item sixteen. Hey, resolution twenty twenty-four oh one, attendance of meetings.
Hey, Benny, you want to go through these? Then we go. We do every year.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh one, resolution to authorize dependent set meetings. It is hereby resolved by the Wright County Board of Supervisors that they authorize elective and appointed officials of the Wright County. Of Wright County to attend all meetings approved by the Executive Committee of the Iowa State Association of Counties. Be it further resolved that the clerks and various office shall be authorized to attend meetings when approved by their governing officers. Dated the second day of January twenty twenty-four.
All right, do I have a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-four oh one?
Go move.
There are seconds.
Second.
Okay, Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. A resolution twenty twenty-four oh two, payment of claims prior to board meeting. These will be like electric bills, things like that that come up.
Something that comes up needs to be paid ahead of the meeting.
For fixed charges, including but not limited to freight, express, postage, water, light, telephone service or contractual services. After bill is filed with the auditor. For salaries and payrolls, if the compensation has been fixed or approved by the board. The salary or payroll shall be certified by the officer or supervisor under whose direction the supervision of the compensation is earned.
A motion.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh two.
So seconds.
Sorry.
First and a second. Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-four oh three, treasure naming depositories. Hey Peggy, we have First Citizens Bank with a maximum up to fifteen million, First State Bank up to five million, First Bank. Eagle Grove Clarion Office, five million, First State Bank, one point five million, United Bank and Trust out of Dow's one hundred thousand. Remil Bank and Trust out of Belmont, three million, and Iowa Public Agency Western Way Investment Trust up to ten million. All those going to stay the same? Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
There are second.
Second.
Okay, Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Hey, resolution twenty twenty-four oh four, construction evaluation master matrix. This is something we do every year that when they are going to build a facility, then we're notified that it is going in. So we can have a public hearing and let our citizens know what is going on. It's not a yes or no, but more or less to spring this in the loop, that is when they come.
And then we're able to go and review that matrix to make sure that the points that they captured are accurate to what we see also. So we always meet up, Board of Supervisors always have someone in that area or appoint someone else and we always go on site.
We also mail postcards out within a mile. Is it something, um, it's not required, but we do?
We put it, we put it in the paper. Uh, that's how I do it. Um, put it in the paper for approval. And then we do not, we are not required to have a public hearing, but we always do choose for the public's awareness.
Make a motion to approve.
There's second.
Second.
Okay. Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion approved. Item E, resolution twenty twenty-four oh five, Sheriff naming depositories. Now we have First Citizens Bank, Kansas City Clarion Office, one hundred and fifty thousand. Clear for they all remain, appear me the same? Yes. Okay, so a motion to approve.
So move.
There are seconds.
Second.
First and a second. Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Hey, resolution twenty twenty-four oh six, recorder naming depositories. And right now, that would be the First Citizens Bank, Mason City Clarion Office of a maximum one hundred thousand dollars. Is that all going to stay the same?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
First and a second. Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-four oh seven, noxious weed control. Eric, I believe that is you. Is that your, are we commissioner?
Yes, I am.
Have they continued?
Yeah, it needs to be every year or so in horse noxious weed law.
Motion to approve.
There are seconds.
Second.
Any further discussion? Dean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Hey, Adam, secondary roads update. It's true.
I do.
So the blades and the truck drivers have been uh brush cutting bucks a possible. Blades have also been uh blade in when attempts have allowed. Um, completed forty-six work orders last week. A bunch of those were the brush cutting that we've been currently working on. We're at twelve and a quarter townships completed uh with the weather keeping up as way it is. Um, year end, wanted to give you guys a little bit of an update. Um, we've completed a thousand eighty-eight work orders this last year. Permits, brush cutting, tile, anything like that included. Um, and you can see the prior two years were, um, twenty twenty-one was seven hundred and sixty-four, twenty twenty-two was seven hundred and fifty-two. So, um, and been able to do that with the good brother that we've we've had. Branding of material haul, eighty-eight thousand, over eighty-eight thousand tons, three hundred and fifty-nine miles covered. And we replaced five bridges this year.
Very nice.
Yeah, so good, you're a good busy year.
That has been unbelievable for brush cutting.
Yes, it has. Yeah, and burning ditches and everything like that. So it's been good. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the old business, new business, we're meeting updates.
I had Eldora and then I also met with workforce on that bill. They're trying to shut down our throw. We're trying to throw back down, but we're still working on that.
Okay.
As you recall, that's a board that we dissolved two years ago.
It's still.
I did not have any meetings.
Okay, I had no meetings. So our next meeting is scheduled for next Monday? Can I ask for the board? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
So move.
But first, there are second. In discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.
Thank you, Dean.
Thanks, Dean. We'll see you when you get back.
You bet. You bet, thanks.